And good morning and welcome to the standing committee meeting for Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. Council will be meeting in hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually as there will be limited number of seats available in council chambers. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Once your call, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says, "All power is inherent in the people, and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness." Where did elected officials get the idea that they are lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? How can Gregory Coyle sit smugly at a town hall meeting in opposition to "we," the property owners of Bon Air? His response about the parking issue at the building is that the mayor is not going to require it. Is Mayor Paduto his best buddy? No wonder the mayor is on his way out. Our community is not his to make and mold to his will. We, the people of Bon Air, do not consent to this threat to our peace, safety, and happiness. Official oppression has consequences. Significant community concern has been expressed to the Board of Education and the City Council all these months since the announcement of the sales agreement for Bon Air School. Perhaps there is a neighborhood busting plan afoot. Block busting is illegal. Is there any lobbying or unregistered lobbying taking place? Are any special friends of Bill Paduto involved in this noncompliance sale? My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air's school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for Mayor Pittsburgh 2021. We focus on optimal information and intelligence from the 21 primary disciplines to inform public policy. Well, when national intelligence information networks were founded by me in 2020, F of X plus H minus F of X divided by H is F prime of X, which is key. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is to recognize significant providers of the best information via high intelligence to the Pittsburgh public, as evidenced in the proclamation 12 October 2021 for KDKA's Lynn Hayes Freeland, LHF. I and the GIS ask Pittsburghers in all nine council districts if they think KDKA, WTAE, WPXI coverage level is genius, average, or moronic. They say very frequently it is moronic. GIS assessment, KDKA, WTAE, and WPXI coverage is, as a pattern, superficial, lacking informational density and intelligence complexity, and cliched, a cliche, "all politics is local," cliched squared, "all broadcasting is local." LHF 12 October 21. These are lies. Informational and intelligence values of this, zero, moronic. Lies from an information intelligence KDKA reporter honored by Councilor Lavelle for providing realistic information and reliable intelligence to Pittsburghers for decades. Pittsburghers whom LHF and her KDKA Neanderthal equipment videographer Steve left behind before hearing citizen information and intelligence in public comment. This is moronic behavior. The KDKA news, so-called news between four and seven, is moronic fast food stuff. It'll make you sick if you watch it too often. A black African American female icon making citizens Ralph Ellison invisible men and women. I and the GIS ask Pittsburghers all over the city if they think that moronic KDKA, WTAE, and WPXI personnel talk to citizens as if they are morons. And they say yes. If they think that counselors, mayors, mayor candidates talk at them, down at them, and show as, as if, and treat them as if, as voters, they are morons. And they say yes. If they think candidates for political office like mayor candidates moronically sabotage each other's campaign advertisements, and they just laugh, they say yes. I'll run Miller posters like this one disappear off of South Main Street in the West End amidst Moreno ads and Gani ads in The Hill. The DPNRP are, in my view, to blame.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikahana Hal Malkina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikahana Hal Malkina. I'm the Grand Inter the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today I would like to address some of the concerns of the American people, specifically in this city that you call the city of Pittsburgh, the tale of two cities, that is. Recently, Mr. Rogers, life was terminated by a Pittsburgh police officer, an overzealous rookie police officer, who unfortunately caused the death of this man. We need to invoke, we need to implement better ways of dealing with the public. Our people are seen as enemies. Our people were seen as worthless, and this needs to change. Dogs, cats, and other animals are treated with much more dignity and care. I've yet to hear about a dog being tamed because it's roaming around aimlessly in the streets. I do not understand what that is the first mean and method of dealing with the public. Something must be done. To continue to do things, business as usual, is not acceptable. It's no longer acceptable to continue to do things that are just producing the same results. It is the definition of insanity to do the same thing and expect different results, right? Something different must be done. We must be treated as if we are the human beings that we are, treated with love, compassion, and care, and dignity. For he is someone's father, someone's uncle, someone's son, someone's grandfather, and now his life is no more. And there is not a redo button. You can't go back and take back what has happened. But what you can do is go back into your policies, reach back into your policies to reevaluate what your protocols will be for your officers, who seem to devalue the human lives that they are sworn by oath to protect and serve. That, my friend, is not protecting and serving the community, taking away someone's life. I also need you to address some of the ills in society that are caused by this economic, social divide. The poverty, the food insecurity, the education gaps, the air, water.
Thank you. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us that would like to speak? Please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Tom Brady. I live on Mount Washington 352 Camback Street. I lived on Mount Washington my whole life. I'm 62 years old, so I've been up on that hill my whole life. I'm calling about, Bruce, I am not blaming you about this. I'm blaming the planning and zoning on my street. As you know, remember the big fire 10 years ago that took three houses? What, we're having a problem with Bailey Avenue as they're racing going down there. Seventy-five miles per hour on that street, and it's 25 miles. And the side streets, people can't get out now. Two months ago, a guy pulled out of Judicial, which we made it a one-side parking because we couldn't get the fire trucks down there. Well, car, an SUV came and hit it, swung, the SUV swung across the street, crashed into the iron fence, knocked the iron fence down, and then slid over the hill, but the weed tree stopped it from tumbling over the hill. And as I say, there's been accidents up here, about six accidents so far, and we've got to slow down the traffic. As I say, the people are parking their cars up around there in these big SUVs, and you can't see out of the side streets. And I'm not blaming you. I'm blaming the planning and zoning. They did this to you of putting these houses into apartments, and that's what they should, they should have came up and looked at these houses and said, "There's no parking." No, but they did that to make money. I don't know. But that's one thing I would like to talk to you about in the future. We've, I talked to Bobby, and he told me in the future that you're going to be doing it next year about doing something about Bailey Avenue. It's Bailey Avenue, it's Judicial and Bailey and Bailey and Etta Street where Dr. McCollum is at. The people from Bigby Street cannot come out because they're scared because the cars are speeding down there. It's a, if you remember, Beltsuver, from Beltsuver all the way down to Boggs, it's one long street, and there has been accidents, people crashing into the stone wall up in the Granville Park twice. So that's the thing we've got to get straightened out about. Number two, I don't have enough time, but I contacted, I tried to get ahold of the Reverend so many times, four to five times, he won't return my calls. Anthony Coghill called me, I called him twice about the parks and everything. One of these days, Anthony, I'd like to sit down in your office or with you and talk about, here's an idea I have about what we can do to make it not going so bad, if you don't mind doing that. I'll come next week and talk about what I seen up in the parks. As you know, Bruce, and you know Teresa, and Teresa, that was a smart idea of doing what Virginia Avenue and Begum Street, putting those signs here. That was common sense. You know, you did the right thing. But I would like to talk to you about what I see up there. I am involved with the parks. As you know, Bruce, friends at Granville Park, we have done it years, we've done it. Now the neighbors of the mountain and the NWC, I've been involved with all of them, and all I'm just trying to do is keep the parks nice and looking, and that's all I need to do. So if you have time, I'll stop at your office, Anthony, and give my number and everything, and then I'll let them, you can get ahold of me if you want to. Okay? You guys all have a nice day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers with us today in chambers?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I bet KB were over the tires up at the top where the Civic Arena used to be. I came today because I want you citizens to understand, when you don't come, then you don't know what's happening. Now, yesterday, when we had the agenda, and I'm looking through the agenda, the mayor has taken in all these commissions and boards and stuff, he's been put these different people. Some people I've never seen their names before. So he's not coming out in the front of us when he needs to be explaining what he's doing, but behind closed doors. He's filled up those commission, commissions and boards with people he wanted. How come, as the man that spoke yesterday from Befford Dwellings, he spoke very well, and he was saying, "How come he couldn't be on some of these committees?" It's not just him, but there's other people. We're wondering, where are you getting these people? Where are they coming from? You know, when I, when I heard Bush, I mean, not Bush, Trump, he's suing or something, I said, "Here comes the snake out from under the rock." Because you know, I have a friend that went to Vietnam. He fought over there. When he came back, you know, but he calls this United Snakes of America. And you know, we got a lot of snakes slithering up on their rocks. When you don't come before us, that's what I consider, I consider you. Now, I had my mother. My mother was the type that she was a fussler, and I guess I took that after her. But one thing, my mother was like this, if you got to talk to her, look at her, she's just as ignorant, too. You know what, Dr. Miller, he has took and stopped Brenda and was telling her how such a fabulous job she's doing. And I'm looking, and he said, "Well, I know you don't care for her." And I said, "Well, no, I don't, because I don't feel that she was, she had the qualifications." It's Kim. Kim did it. She's got on-the-job training. Kim done taught her how to do this, because she didn't know the laws of Pennsylvania. And I want you to understand, I come down because other people won't, because we need to see the sneaky things he's doing. Anytime he's got all these boards with all these different people, half of us don't know who they are. And where'd he get them from? They came from under the rocks, the snakes, snakes in the grass. And that's what I feel sometimes about them. Now, people have been telling me, "I can't come down here. You can't come down here and talk smart to them, Yvonne, because they're not going to listen." Well, I don't care whether you listen or not. I'm come, still going to keep coming. And I am 75 years old, and I can't tell y'ance, and I've been coming here over 20-something years, and you disrespect me. You get what you get, you get what you give. And I don't have reverence for none of y'ance.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Last call, any further speakers? If not, we will move on to our standing committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Yeah.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Our first supplemental paper is Bill 2058.
Bill 2058, Resolution Authorizing an Agreement With Mar Dusel for Services Related to the Administration of the City's Emergency Rental Assistant Program Funding at a Cost Not to Exceed $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2059.
Bill 2059, Ordinance Amending the City Code So As to Extend the Life of the Parking Tax Access and Make Related Changes to the, to evacuate that extension.
Motion to hold.
Ruth, very brief discussion.
Second.
Is this related to the pension offset?
Yes, we need.
Also then co-sponsor, please?
Yes.
I would like to, yes.
We make sure of any bills that come through for the pension, Social Security Offset, that Councilman, that's the three of us, and Councilman Kraus and Councilman Coghill are all as co-sponsors all.
Thank you. We'll do. And we need, we need to hold this for a public hearing, and we should do it the same time we're doing the other public hearings related to the pension offset.
What would you like the motion to?
Motion to hold for a public hearing.
I move.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing. You moved it, I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for a cable cast public hearing. Our deferred paper, Bill 57.
Bill 57, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title to Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 237. The City of Pittsburgh Park Tax Fund to Conform with the Home Rule Charter, Article 9, in order to establish the creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Tax Fund.
Motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Second.
Can I refer over to Councilman Coghill, because I believe Councilman Coghill has an amendment to Bill 57?
We had met yesterday, Council, Councilman Burgess and Councilwoman Gross, and we decided to make this amendment in order to really get things going in the right direction, which I think will make everybody happy as to our districts and making sure that we get the improvements and things that we need for our parks. So I want to thank Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Burgess for their leadership on this, who I lean on heavily. So, and I defer to them if they'd like to speak to it.
But just may, may I briefly? So this bill has been on hold, essentially. So you've brought it back to the table. We don't need to amend it, because the amendment is actually the exact same as what is currently on the table. We just need to approve what is already existing.
So I'm looking at the bill, right?
So. Burgess.
Go ahead. So we are, we've met yesterday as a committee. This is a starting point, but I think there are going to be a few more changes that the committee wants to recommend. So I'd rather, I think we want to hold it for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And then bring back a couple of recommendations to the council. The idea is, let's make it very clear with the idea. The idea is that the Park Tax Trust Fund would have an annual, an annual expenditure that comes before council that we can examine as a whole, and that no money comes out of that trust fund unless council approves it. So that's the, that's really the broad scheme of it. There's some conversation about line items and about creating some council line items for use of those funds. But that's, we're having that conversation now. But this, this broad idea is an idea we all support, that there is a trust fund that is established, that that trust fund comes to us annually for approval versus it being an open trust fund that just can be spent without council oversight.
Yeah. So I'll make, I'm sorry, did you want to speak?
Sure, man. So as I understand, Mr. Chair, this is the bill as it exists, so we're going to discard this, and the bill as it exists, we're going to ask to hold for?
We can, motion to hold for two weeks.
Second. All those in favor, cut, sorry.
I'm sorry. I never got.
I missed Councilwoman Gross, she had her hand up.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Just a few words. Yeah, so I wanted to thank Madam President for kind of reinvigorating us and pushing us to come to some resolution and deadline before the end of the year. We had a productive meeting. I think that we have, as Councilman Burgess said, a general concept, and appreciate our budget office helping us kind of work it out so that it's something that fits with our appropriation process with council. And I do think that we'll, we'll find something that all council can support in just a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Council President Smith?
I just want to thank the committee for working and coming together. And I do, it sounds like you're trying to gather what everyone wants to see is council having some say in these dollars, and not just assuming that they're going to go to one organization or to do the things that maybe council members aren't even approving of. So I'm glad to hear, see that council will maintain some say in that. But thank you all.
Thank you. So we have a motion.
I knew you were the right team.
Motion to hold for two weeks, seconded by Councilman Burgess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. That brings us to Bill 1980.
Bill 1980, Ordinance Amending a Supplement in the City Code at Title to Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund to Clarify Uses and Restrictions of the Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second, brief discussion, please.
Yes, there is an amendment on the table. I would move to amend. There's a written amendment.
Do you have a second?
A second with a brief discussion.
A discussion?
We go through it a little bit. So basically, the amendment was encouraged by the Department of Public Safety. Shetara may be on the line, she is on the line. And so this is, in keeping with what it is that they would, what they want, including to some things I think we want. There are really three things that this does. One, is it like, we talked about the Parks Bill, it brings an annual allocation to council for our oversight and our approval, so that we, so it does not become an open-ended fund that can be spent without our approval. That's number one. Number two, it limits the amount that can be used internally on the fund to 20%, so that staff internal, because it was really designed to be going into community groups. And so it limits the administrative use of these funds annually to 20%.
I see.
And, and it puts the fund under the purview of the Department of Public Safety. I think those are the three major takeaways from the amendment, and I'll let Shetara sort of talk about it if she wants to. But that was in direct response to her and the Public Safety Director's concerns.
Thank you.
Is there? Sorry to interrupt, but I am struggling to find the amendment. We talked about it yesterday afternoon in our parks meeting, and I was looking for the email, but I never could find it. Did the amendment get emailed to members? Do you have any?
Yes, it was, Councilwoman, I'm looking, it was sent around 9:38, I believe.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
By Louise.
Are we entertaining Shetara, or are we?
Oh, I don't really have too much to add. These amendments came as a result of just trying to make sure that there was some structure and how the funds were used and distributed, that, you know, 20% internal, 80% external, and just also making sure that, you know, council's involved in the process so that, you know, monies are going to community organizations appropriately, you know, within their district. So previously, before the legislation was amended, you know, there was a lot of access to it. So the mayor's office had access to it, you know, and could go directly to OMB and make decisions. Public Safety had access to it. This way, it's just structured, you know, and under one department, obviously, with oversight from council and OMB, we can just make sure that we're clear on how the money is used, when it is used, and where it's coming to.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was hoping that you'd allow an interrogatory with Reverend Burgess to find out why it is being structured with 20% maximum expenditures internally for our own offices and who work on these violence initiatives, and, and, and then why 80% outside groups is mandated here.
Sure. Originally, when we created the fund, it was designed to put 100% of it to outside organizations. The whole idea was to fund outside violence prevention programs. Councilman Lavelle and I, in consultation with the Public Safety Director and with the, the mayor's office, talked about these other programs that needed to occur internally that in order to be successful, such as the social worker program, a lot of the Office of Community Health and Safety, and that there was really no other venue to fund those, those projects. But I do think they're of worth and are important to the violence prevention process, but I still think that we should, the bulk of the resources should still go to community-based organizations that are doing the work every day. And so what this does is it limits so that, you know, we're keeping the spirit of the fund in, in place. And so that number was a negotiated number with us and Public Safety and everybody who would listen over the last few months.
Thank you for that explanation. I still have some concerns that it's only 80, only 20% allowed for internal use. I mean, I see the Office of Community Health and Safety, Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention just really getting off the ground and already expanding, already doing some really fantastic work that is, you know, I would hope that we would cultivate. And so I'm glad that now some of these funds will be there to bolster that effort. But I guess I just hope that, that more of these, more of this trust fund, these trust fund dollars that are coming from, well, let's see, a certain percentage of the budgeted amount for allocated to the Bureau of Police, but then go towards additional internal uses that are, you know, that are really just getting off the ground and that I think we, you know, still need to invest in. So I don't know, So I don't know, in my mind, the number still seems low. I would love to see it increased. At the very least, I'd like to see us be able to revisit this in the future. If this passes today, I'd like to see us revisit this in the future to assess whether the percentages are correct. And I'm happy to have anyone respond to this, whether it's another council member who can help clarify this and the thinking behind this for me or Shetara or anyone else.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We have Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question for Councilman Burgess and Shetara, am I overthinking it by suggesting that we tighten up the language of the Department of Public Safety? Is it too broad? Should it be the Public Safety Director? Department of Public Safety is, seems to me that most, anyone within the bureau could argue to make access for the funds. Maybe I'm overthinking it. I just thought I'd ask what your opinion is.
The, and I have to ask the Budget Director, Budget Office to help me do this. I think we're just putting the fund in a place. It's not the person, it's the place. The fund right now is not in a place. It's kind of not in any department. So we're actually putting the fund in a place. That does not mean that anyone in that department has access to the fund. It simply puts the fund in that place.
Originally, we did have a place, Office of Management and Budget as it existed, but we wish to add the Department of Public Safety as well. I'm overthinking it a little bit.
It was originally, sorry, Councilman Kraus, it was OMB, the mayor's office, the Department of Public Safety. I think it might've just been those three entities. There could have been a fourth. And this just put it under the Department of Public Safety because that's where the account for the trust fund actually lives in Public Safety. And so the oversight of the trust fund should be a joint responsibility between Public Safety as well as OMB. And now, I'm not sure how other departments work. I can only speak for mine. We have to go through our finance administrator who then takes everything to the director. So we have others of trust funds in Public Safety, but we're just not at free will to spend, you know, from, I just can't access them and take whatever I want out of them. We have a process.
I'm good. Thank you, I'll support.
Thank you, President Smith.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I love the idea of the Community Health and Safety Office and, and some of the things they're doing. But I do think that we have to identify the funding differently is what I think. Because I don't necessarily think that the funds that are going to the community based organizations should be, and to Shetara and to some of the work that they're doing should be coming from the same pot of, I feel like we're pitting one department or one division of a department against another. Instead of trying to figure out how to fund what's important to us. So I think that's, you know, whatever is important to us, that's what this budget in '22 should be reflecting. But I do wonder how we're, who determines who the CBOs are, how much money they're getting, what their contract looks like, what's the enforcement, what's the auditing process? I want to make sure that when we're giving, you know how I feel about nonprofits, I want to make sure when we're giving them, they do amazing work. And there's some that we cannot do without in the city of Pittsburgh, like the food bank. But there are some that will have, leave a lot of questions and leave us wondering, you know, what their real motives are and what they're really doing. So for me, I want to make sure that we're giving money to groups and to nonprofits that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing with public dollars. So I'm just curious, could, Shetara, could you tell us what the process is when you have a CBO applying for, how do they apply? Just tell us the whole, walk us through the process.
I'll take you from the top. So
And does it come back before council for approval? Those are the things I want to know.
So I'll take you from the top. We're just very, we're in the like super infancy stages of this right now of working with a, a foundation that has not been selected yet to help us, you know, to distribute these funds to community organizations. We are building that process. No money has been distributed. Councilwoman, so if you know, I share your sentiments with, you know, it's the organization legit, it's all their paperwork, you know, in place.
I also wonder if the foundations are legit. So that to me takes away the process from city council when you're going through a foundation. So I'm going to, we've had this come before us numerous times. So I'm going to be honest, it's a concern to me.
The issue, the issue that we have and it's a barrier to really supporting and helping our community based organizations is that everything with the city is reimbursable, or sorry, it's a reimbursable process. Well, at least all the projects that I have worked on have been a reimbursable process. So if we have something in a specific council district and we have a community based organization, and this is just a hypothetical that says, you know, I need to increase my capacity to bring in 25, you know, more kids to do an after school program. Because your officers are saying that like this group of kids are just kind of causing trouble on the streets and I want to bring them in. I just, I just don't have the capacity to support them. So if you, they come to us and they're like, okay, city of Pittsburgh, here's my proposal. I need $15,000 to bring these kids in, to hire more staff, obtain technology and whatever else. Well, we, we say to them and we have said to them, okay, well, you have to spend $15,000 or you have to spend $5,000, you have to spend seven thousand dollars, show us that you've done the work and that you spent the money and then we'll pay you back for it. So that's why we can't, we can't invest in these community organizations. We can't properly support them because they don't have the capacity, they don't have the financial resources and they don't have the infrastructure to be able to, to help their communities in the way that they know how. So with this particular process, or I should say aspect of a trust fund, we're saying, okay, we hear you. We understand this concern and we are going to break down that barrier of this reimbursable process. It doesn't mean that if you need $15,000, that you're going to get $15,000 in your hand right away. You still have to prove some work. So if that's $2,000 that you need, you know, for startup costs through this process, you can get that. And then as you grow capacity and prove the needs, the rest of your $15,000 will be given to you. Again, we sent out an RFP sometime ago. We, full transparency, I don't know, we, we had some questions. And so we worked with the proper city departments to get those questions back to those organizations that did respond to the RFP. Just to make sure that, you know, things are going the way that we want them to go, we need them to go. Councilwoman, so if we agree when it comes to that, we will work with council on this and make sure that whatever process you all are comfortable with, that we are moving forward with that process. But that is the barrier. If we could find a way internally to be able to support these organizations without it being through a reimbursable process, then we necessarily wouldn't have to, you know, look for a foundation to help us manage this money. We could just manage it internally.
So I'm going to say you gave us a lot to think about, but so I'm going to abstain today. But I do think that we need to talk about this process a little bit and how we're distributing the funds and where the accountability will come in with those funds. I, I just feel like we do this across the board. We do this with the act of funding now that, I think it's called the N E E D money. We do it with CDBG money and we change the process even internally sometimes, even from contract to contract. So it's just the way we just in general allocate funding to organizations I'm concerned with in the city. So I'd like to have a further conversation with some of the members before I vote for this. So I'll abstain today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, then we'll go to second round, Councilman.
Did you mention me for first round? Is that first round or second round?
We're still on first round, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my just overall concern is with the, the number 80%. I was hoping someone could help me understand this number wasn't picked arbitrarily. My concern is that we're not actually investing in, looking at this, this spending in a strategic way to really ensure that it speaks to stop the violence. And so what I'd like to see is a real strategic plan on, you know, these funds being spent in an appropriate way to stop the violence. So before we come up with a number of 80%, I'd like to see, you know, how this, this number is just not, and if it isn't arbitrarily picked, then, you know, please explain. But as of now, I, I don't have any evidence on this, you know, bill to know that the funds will be spent, you know, 80% to outside groups. I, it's just too vague for me.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Burgess, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
That's my gross, is she a first round?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, she, she just asked a question. I apologize. Councilwoman Gross, first round?
Yeah, I thought, but then I wasn't sure. Appreciate it. So I appreciate that some of the language here is what we're moving towards with the trust, the parks trust fund as well. And I I, I hear members' concerns about what level this split should be. And I'm recalling our conversations last year creating it. It was earlier this year, creating it. And hearing a lot of the testimony both last year and this year about you know, new efforts to reduce violence. But also police, you know, diversion or mental health assistance, social worker assistance. And it, it feels to me, and I may not be, this may not be right, but as I listen now, it feels to me that there are different capacities in these two separate programs. And maybe I'm stating the obvious, maybe I'm not, but that the efforts to do the awards to groups that are in the community that are not on payroll, that are not in-house, that are not the Office of Health and Safety, are actually more targeted at violence reduction. That's what they say. Whereas the other operating expenditures that are here kept at 20% are going to fund the Office of Community Health and Safety. I think we, we talked about, right? It would have social workers going along when there are 911 calls. But that from some of the grants they received are really aimed at wellness and people maybe who are homelessness, mental health issues, addiction issues. And those are actually both needed, but they're not the same thing. And so I just wanted to, to kind of remind myself, remind others of that, that we're really getting at two different social problems, which may actually be occurring in different, there may be more prevalent, one might be more prevalent in some parts of the city or some people's council districts and others might be more prevalent in other parts of the city or other sections of people's council districts, that kind of thing. So I think that's what we're struggling with. What I, what I don't have in front of me easily to pull up, I kind of miss having my big printed budget is how much we spent on the Office of Community Health and Safety out of the Stop the Violence Fund this year. Like what are, what are its overhead costs?
Right now, Councilwoman, I think as far as internal expenditures, we're at 9% to the Office of Community Services. This is rough, rough estimates, roughly 9%. It's like eight point something of another. So roughly 9% for the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. And then roughly 21% for the Office of Community Health and Safety of the Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
So 20% of 5 million is a million? So was it a million dollars budgeted for this year to the Health and Safety Office?
I don't, I think that number is a little high. So I would have to, I don't have my numbers in front of me either. I should have had them prepared for today. But I can get those numbers to you when it's broken down. It's about 9% and 21%.
For the outreach? I'm, I'm struggling, I feel like I'm saying the, the names of the offices wrong.
So I guess, so the outreach contracts, all of them are external. So I was only referencing monies that were spent internally on staff and benefits and things like that from For the Office of Community Health and Safety as well as the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. So there's two separate offices.
They're sharing that 9%?
No.
Okay, so the violence prevention, let's just kind of make the word so we can contrast the, the violence prevention was getting 9% and health and safety was getting 20%?
So yes, internally, the staff that have been dedicated to support the violence prevention efforts internally are currently funded right now at 9%. The internal staff to support, you know, homelessness, opioid addiction, things like that, through OCHS are currently funded from the trust fund at around 21%.
Okay, well, like if it's 20% of 5 million, then yeah, that's a million dollars. And so the question I think I heard Councilwoman Smith say is, well, you know, if we want to fund this department of community health and safety, that's not a department, but this Office of Community Health and Safety. Does, does that funding need to come out of a trust fund? Maybe you didn't say this, but this is kind of the way I was thinking. Or does it come straight out of the operating budget and its own line item? And not kind of, right now, we're taking money from the operating budget in a matching scale, not diverting police budget. But is, if the police budget doubles, so does the Stop the Violence Fund double? If the police budget is in half, then the Stop the Violence Fund gets cut in half. So it's just a matching amount, but it's coming straight from operating funds. If it's going from operating funds and then going into the Health and Safety Office. And, you know, does it need to do that?
I think it's a larger conversation.
You don't need to answer that one. That's a hypothetical question for members to answer, right? Like if we, if we believe in this work, then we can just fund it in the budget without it coming out of this. So I think that kind of can make us feel better about what these percentages are. So what I think the real question in front of us is that do we feel like funding the outreach work is worth 80% of this fund? And we, I heard a lot of testimony last year and this year about how underfunded the workers who are doing the outreach are. And in fact, they really should be at a higher pay scale, no matter what hours they're doing. And that secondly, we weren't providing enough hours to those workers so they were juggling other jobs and trying to do the outreach work. And then we hear testimony about how they were doing interventions at schools, at funerals, at providing, which is what I heard that made me feel a lot better, that these outreach workers, if we paid them to do more hours and paid them well, so they didn't have to juggle other jobs, were also reaching people who were in crisis and helping to connect them with food, with jobs, with housing. And I was particularly moved by that, that we could, we have the capacity to fund people, to find those who are in crisis and connect them with the resources that they need. And that's a lot of what we talked about at the table, is how to, how to connect our, our citizens with the resources that they need. So I understand members' concerns though, so, you know, I've still got my ears open, but that's all I'll say now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to second round, for my piece, I actually agree with Councilwoman Gross. I'm okay with the 80% number because originally this pot of funding was supposed to be 100% to fund the outside organizations that are doing violence prevention work. However, to support staff, we have allocated 20% to do so. I agree with Councilwoman Gross that if we believe in what the staff is doing, then budget, budget season is quickly upon us. We should just dedicate money for those purposes and then leave this pot of funding to do what it wasn't originally intended to do. So for that reason, I'll support Councilman Burgess's amendments today. Second round, Councilman Burgess.
So everyone who has spoken is, is right. Let's just talk about sort of practically how we do this. This, everyone who spoke today is right. What this does, this amendment does is simply set the rules of how the trust fund is allocated. It does not say what those allocation process looks like. We can come back and do that. What has to happen is the Department of Public Safety has done an RFP for a provider to, to help distribute the funds and to monitor. The reason you want an outside group is you want someone who has the capacity to not only award them as a grant, but then has the internal tracking process, which we don't have, but they would have, that track the spending of the money to make sure that they're doing what it is we want them to do. So in my mind, this is really kind of more of a two step process, right? The first is to get control over the spending so that council has a direct accounting of how the money's spent. And then I think there's a second process. And then I think there's a second process to work with Shetara to talk about how the grants are distributed. Um, in, in my mind, I think there is probably two or three different areas. Uh, but lastly, let me just talk about philosophically something that I think I've been trying to do this work for, for twenty years. And one of the things I think that gets sort of lost is that all of this, violence is not a direct thing. It's not, although it, it does have a direction, right? Your young people may shoot another person. But there are layers of, of disenchantment, of hopelessness, right? And from the very beginning of doing this work, we were always supposed to put a social service component to the violence prevention effort that we just never funded. I think the best way to look at this is if, if I would take you to a place in my district, um, and I'll say it, Homewood and Frankstown. Um, if you go to Homewood and Frankstown on any given day, you're going to see a variety of activity. Some of it illegal, some of it legal, some of it, just, it's just a whole bunch of people. There's a, there's sort of a flea market, illegal flea market, this is all this stuff going on. Well, you can't really send the police to deal with all those merit of issues, right? That's not going to work. You can't send a social worker alone because that's not going to work. The outreach worker alone, not going to work. But um, with a coordinated effort, you would be able to go to this, this quadrant of problems. There's been lots of shootings, um, lots of problems with the store there, just lots of problems. With this coordinated effort, having both outreach workers and, and um uh, social service workers and police in a coordinated way, you would be able to go to those corners and clean them up at the same time, providing the needs and resources that everyone in that corner may need. And that's the attempt to do this, is the, is to create a coordinated effort to meet the needs of people in these at-risk communities where the violence is occurring. Because it's all connected, right? If mama, if my, if my mother, you know, doesn't have money and food, um, then I'm more likely to do things to provide food on the table and to act out. If, if, you know, um, and so um, the, the, the real, the real cause of this violent stuff is hopelessness. And so we, we need to, in a very coordinated way, try to get rid of all those social problems that cause violence to be the last consequence of very, a very bad social situation. So um, I say all this to say, this is certainly the first step, not the last step. And I hope that we can pass this first step. And then I'll continue to work with members and with council as a whole and Shetara as we go through the allocation process. And we'll decide what that needs to be as a, as a entity.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, um, thank you, uh, members for all your comments. I guess I wanted to just ask, so eighty percent, there's no, like what is that going to be spent on? It just says that only eighty, eighty percent, at least eighty percent has to go towards outside organizations. But there's no outside organizations identified yet?
Yes, correct. The, the process, so the process would be that first of all, we have to hire the intermediate, right? Then the intermediate would, with consultation to us, um, send out an RFP um, of some one or two, three pots of money that could be available, right? And then that, that they would then consider it and then they release it. So I think there's some conversation that has to come to council to decide what the, what those pots of RFP money can look like. Like there's been some, there's been great, you and I have talked, I'll just say this publicly, you, you and I have talked about support for the sport leagues, sports leagues as, as a major component. Everyone agrees, everyone agrees that those youth football teams and youth baseball teams um, um, in these at-risk communities have their hands on these kids that are most likely to be subject to street life at some point, right? And so perhaps that, 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 that helping to invest in these young people in part of that program, uh, in an educational or counseling way may be a good way to do that. But that's not to determine. So we have to, we have to first hire the, the consultant and then talk with them about what we want to see happen. Yeah, full disclosure, I've been working with parks, with city parks, so that it's coordinated, whatever we do becomes coordinated with our city because our public work, our, our parks also does a lot of this work, right? They do a lot of recto tech, they do a lot of this work. And the idea is there's only so much money. If we can coordinate it with all of our city resources and get the outside groups, again, everything should be seamless and coordinated. That's really the, 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 the challenge is up until now, we've not had money to coordinate everything. Now we have the resources, we can coordinate and get the biggest bang out of our dollars.
Hmm, so you brought it up, um, the conversation we've been having, and I guess, you know, initially I'm in support of, you know, projects like that and money being spent like that. I guess it's just that, you know, I, I don't feel that council or me alone or us working together should be like, um, you know, the only way ideas come to the table. And so it'd be, it'd be great to know, you know, a strategic way that, like we're gonna, we're gonna get confirmation that that plan will work. You know, where has this been done? You know, where, you know, I mean, I can, you know, pontificate on what I think might, might be, you know, a great option. But I'm just really concerned about, you know, eighty percent going to outside organizations, like is this, is there something internal that we might have to create to bring after-school programming? If that is, you know, what the experts say works um to the community, would we have to fund that in-house? And you mentioned, you know, city parks or the parks department. And so that will be internal funds and that wouldn't be, you know, and that would be outside of the eighty percent, is the way the bill's written currently. So I just have concerns over just, just that part in general. Um, and I would hope that we would take this bill and um, and revise it in a way and amend it in a way that would be reflective of a, of a, of a national model or a model that, you know, speaks to organizations and the way, and the way money's spent to outside organizations that has shown to be successful. I guess I'd like to see some stats. Yeah.
Well, part of it is the, the, the violence prevention effort that we're funding through the Center of Community Cures is um, is a, is a blue ribbon, evidence-based model out of John J. College, um, that intervention method itself that it, that we didn't talk about, but that funds this. It's already um, um, one of the two uh leading violence production, violence reduction models in the, in the country. So we are actually already following a model that was um part um of the Obama Justice Department's efforts to reduce violence. And we've been a part of that. So I, I didn't mean to suggest that, and everything we're doing is underneath that umbrella. So we are already under a, a sort of national model that we're using. Now we're just talking about bits and pieces underneath that model that we can use to, to, to further its efforts. So it, there is already, yes, I probably didn't make that clear. There is um, um, this ceasefire model um, um, designed by um, um, Professor Kennedy, John J. College, um, um, is the model that our city uses um, that, you know, we brought to the city many, many years ago. And all this stuff is underneath that model. Um, and it's part of the national initiative to, national initiative to build community trust, which we were one of the, we were one of the first uh five cities in the country to do. That probably was before you were on office, and so I've not been maybe as clear about that because.
Are you referring to, you know, what Dr. Kennedy or maybe it was Professor Kennedy covers in his book, Don't Shoot?
Yes, well, the actual model, yes, the model is, I'm actually in that book. But, which is, which is, we, a, a selfless plug, right? But um, um, yeah, that model, that is the model that we use.
I don't, I don't.
It's been, it's, we call it something different now, but it's.
Not aware that we actually use the call-in method.
Well, sure we do.
Okay.
We absolutely do it. We just do it now, we just do it, um, we do it in, um, I mean, Shetara can explain that, but we do it in, sometimes we do it in um targeted, what are they called? They're called targeted, help me, Shetara, they're called targeted interventions. It's the same model.
And like right now, COVID and, and protocols and access to certain facilities and things like that have definitely um put a, a damper on some of the places that we have access to and the way that we can execute these things. Because of this, we've created a space, um, we meet every Monday from twelve to two P M to um reassess some of these things. And how do we uh find a different strategic way to bring our partners back to the table and, and work around some of their COVID protocols?
Hmm. Okay, um, is there information on what the current funding supports? And how the new funding would expand that?
Yes, I can get that to you.
I'm sorry, you said you'll, you'll get that to me?
Yeah, I can get that to you. The biggest thing is is that uh we were working, and we've reiterated it, so I don't want to, you know, go over things that we said in the last, you know, few times that we met. But um, I, I'm almost embarrassed to say, and I will send this to you, what our outreach workers were making. And Councilwoman Gross had discussed this a little bit ago, how many jobs they were working, you know, to provide money or support for their families. And now this gives us the capacity to be in the schools longer, to uh make sure that we're following up and providing resources in a, in a more impactful way. It gives us the opportunity to really measure our work in a, and measure community impact the way that we need to. So there's a laundry list of things that we can do now that we can um expand capacity that we just were not able to do before.
I might come back to this, but um, can you, can you also, can someone here explain what the steering committee, what that process is going to look like?
So the idea of the steering committee, and we'll work with council on this as well, is that when, so we're, we're talking about um now the eighty percent and not necessarily the, the twenty percent. But um because of twenty percent, those are more internal discussions through like council, uh, the very Department of Hope, City Council's were the only department in the legislation at this point that the steering committee, when we have these RFPs that we are getting from um the organization that will be helping us manage this process, that's a part of this that will help determine where these mon, these monies go, who will be approved for funding, things of that nature. So that process uh will be created internally with also some support from some external people.
Okay, I don't have any further comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Okay, well, I appreciate all the discussion. I'm going to keep it brief. I'm in support of this today because I, the discussion helped me understand exactly what the needs are out there. And I just wanted to say that I also understand, as we've all said, that this is, that the work that our staff do internally and the work that the violence interruption workers do, um, who don't work for the city but are contracted are two sides of the same coin. They're just getting at violence from different directions. So I'll support this today, but I do, as others do, want to revisit how we're funding our own staff and growing our own departments as well, because um they're equally i- important in my mind.
Thank you, uh, Council President Smith.
I just was going to say, almost similar to what uh Councilwoman Strasburger just said, that I feel better after having the conversation here and hearing some of the things. But I do want to make it clear that I do think that we need to review the process and how we handle allocating funding to nonprofits across the city of Pittsburgh, um, not just in this, for this initiative, but for a lot of them. And I do think a lot of times it should come back to city council uh for approval. We just give blank checks everywhere, and I think that there's no accountability with that. Um, so for me, I'm, I'll vote for today with the understanding that I'm going to work with members, Councilman Burgess and others on, on that process. Um, but to also talk about how Councilman Kalkil and I had talked about uh funding other nonprofits in our districts. Because I think it's, it's one thing that our, our groups are getting funding from this program. None of you know what they do in our community, you just know what they tell you they do. And so I think that there's no one who knows what's going on in our districts better than we do. So for me, I'd like to do that. But I also like to look at, um, when you're talking about some of these programs, a program we do in our side of town, uh, Mrs. Bailey from the Sheridan Community Council worked with, she was a CMU grad and she worked with us um and CMU to create a program where CMU grad students come in, they train our kids on computer programming. Uh, they train, I'm sorry, they train our police officers on computer programming and uh computer um, you know, recto tech stuff. And then they in turn train our kids in the community for free. And if they partner with the city of Pittsburgh, we provide the space and, and whatever resources they need. And we also, even at one point, uh, when the program first started, when we were looking for computers and laptops, we couldn't get them off of our Pittsburgh Public Schools, but South Fayette School District donated them to our kids at, at, uh, in Sheridan. So I mean, it, it was a lot of collaboration from a lot of people. I'd love to see something like that ongoing across the city where we're benefiting the students and uh putting people that really know what they're doing and, and builds a police community relationship in a positive way. They're not just going and playing ball, they're just going and talking. They're actually giving the kids a skill, so I'd love that. I'd love to see that expanded through something like this.
Thank you, Councilman Kalkil.
Thank you. Um, first of all, all good questions. You know, I understand council's hesitancy on, on some of these things. First and foremost, you know, it's, it's hard to, you know, earmark money or, or to, you know, vote for funding for a program that we don't know quite if it's going to be successful. We do know there's a need for it. Um, I, I understand and I support that. Um, but I think most of all, we have to, it's hard for us to do this as counselors, but, but we have to almost, in funding this, look at it as there's many unconventional ways, I believe, police forces can use this funding in order to prevent violence, um, whether it be programming, whether it be social workers, you name it, a lot of different uh buckets there. It would be great to have a menu as to, hey, this funding's going to this and that and this. But Councilman Burgess, maybe you could help clarify this. We're really trying to protect this money from going to anything else but the intended purposes.
Correct.
And if a program works, if we put this money towards, uh, you know, a preventive violence, whether it be a social service worker, whether it be an informant, you know, you name it. There's a thousand different ways police forces can use this type of, um, you know, funds. But um, you know, eventually I feel like we have to be flexible in the way of, you know, once something does work, then we'll fund it more. When something doesn't work, we'll scrap it. Again, it, it's, it's hard to, to, to support and to, to, you know, put our necks out there and support it when we really don't know exactly what's going to work. But I'll be supportive because I have confidence in our, our police. And, you know, I have a confidence that this council will see the transparency as to where every dime is spent and the success of it. So um, so with that, you know, I'll be supportive today and I look forward to, I hope this makes a big difference. Thanks.
Thank you, third round, Councilman Wilson.
I just want to say that I want to be supportive today, but I would like to see, make me more comfortable that the eighty percent was arbitrarily picked before final vote on Tuesday.
It was, I can say one here about eighty percent. The way, the way the eighty percent came about was what the staff needed, what the staff needs were this year and projecting them forward, what they would be in the out years. Because the numbers, because the budget increases, if you look at the front page, the budget increases. So by all of the staff that they said they need this year, that's at thirty percent. Next year, that will be at nineteen percent or so. So that's where the twenty percent came, so that they could have all the staff they said they needed next year without, that's, so really we backed into the number. It was, it was based on what the staff said they needed and what would that cap look like in making sure that never increased. So in the, in the out years, that will go way below, if you keep the same number of staff, right? As the fund increases, it goes from twenty percent to maybe fifteen percent, down to twelve percent over the next three or four years. And that's kind of how we backed into the twenty percent number.
But my thing, yeah, I appreciate that. My thing is, I mean, if we have to create the in-house for some sort of programming, then the eighty percent may can't be done because the eighty percent is, you know, if we already backed us into eighty percent, I'm just saying, like.
We have other mothers, though. We can take it from the general fund. We, I mean, this is, we have, yeah. Yeah, we have, no, no, we're, we, we, we had this conversation yesterday um at our meeting. And maybe this is a good time to remind us. And maybe this is a good time to remind us. For many, for many years, you know, we've been thinking of the budget as as a document that we had to accept. When it's really not. The 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 budget is a doc, is a wish list from the mayor to this council. This council then has full authority to change it, modify it, move line items around, increase it, take money from the general fund, all those things, right? So what happens is, the mayor gives us a wish list.
I just said I've been saying this for twelve years, but I love everybody listening to Reverend so intently.
The mayor does a wish list. We create what we believe is the fiscal um, the fiscal, what we we decide is the fiscal obligation of the city. And then we give that back to the mayor to implement. That's sort of the process, right? And so we can, we can move things around. So um um if we want more money internally, we can take it from a variety of places. It's not, the Public Safety Department is not missing any any dollars, really. The problem is, they have such constraints on how they can use their money. And so we need some vehicle to be able to get money to these community groups. Because I think all of us agree that our community groups that are doing this work need some support from our city. And we don't have a vehicle, and I've been saying this for for ten years, like, you know, we had these workers are out there doing work for like fifteen, twenty thou- you know, fifteen thousand or ten thousand dollars a year, putting their life on the line, getting shot at. You know, and there's no vehicle to to, we say they do good work, but we don't pay them. And, you know, um Teresa has a couple of, I met Sister Mary and other people in her district, they're doing good work. But right now, the city has no vehicle to support them. And in my mind, this become now a vehicle that we pour into those community-based organizations that we know are doing the work. They provide that we could, that are providing with the capacity to do the work. So I'll stop.
Thank you. So we're currently on the actual amendment. So if there's no further discussion.
Oh, I was serious about that. Oh, no, I was serious. Um, I keep very, just in response to the councilman's remarks. And just for the 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 um edification of the public at large, this council did serve fourteen years under forty-seven. Where we were basically handed a budget. That was it. It was designed by the state, given to the mayor and council had it approved. We had very limited room. Last year really was the first year this council crafted a budget in the fourteen years the councilman and I have served on this body. And this year will be the second year and and it will be an incredibly important budget for us. And we do have the power. That is the power that is granted this body. We do accept and receive a budget, but we are fully, um, I hate to use the word entitled, but charged with uh with the finances of the city and and can design the budget. Please, let's not get down that road. I just needed to say that. But number two, the the only reservation I have is that um on on the bill is that we have not really clearly defined staff and they, and I'm always a little leery about using terminology like they and staff without really having a clear definition of who the twenty percent will be spent by. But we can talk about that on, okay, cool. Then we can certainly take that offline. But with that, I would be very uh pleased and happy if the council would take the vote.
Thank you. So seeing no further discussion on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? If none, all those in favor say aye. Any abstentions? Bill is recommended. Uh, if we can take nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight together, they all require executive session.
Bill nineteen ninety-six, resolution amending resolution four fifty-two of twenty twenty, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with the Forest Colsonic, Yocaidis, and Bearaginelli for professional legal services regarding ethics matters by increasing the total spend by twenty-five thousand dollars for a new not to exceed amount of seventy thousand dollars. Bill number nineteen ninety-seven, resolution amending resolution three seventy-two, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Jones Paso Dillas for professional legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission by increasing the total spend by eight thousand nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents for a new not to exceed amount of thirty-two thousand nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Bill number nineteen ninety-eight, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Francisco Mumon and his attorney in the amount of thirty thousand dollars related to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to hold nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight for executive session.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose, bills will be held for executive session. Bill nineteen ninety-nine.
Bill nineteen ninety-nine, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance to enter into a license agreement with Module Design Inc. and E C S Mid-Atlantic L L C to allow the performance of pre-development geotechnical survey work on designated city property in order to facilitate the construction of a ten-unit mixed-income housing development project.
Motion to approve.
Uh, yes, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. You oppose? Bills recommended. Bill two thousand.
Bill two thousand, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a a dono- a donation and professional services agreement with Pittsburgh Land Bank and G R B Law to document the donation of legal services relating to the performance of designated quiet title actions on behalf of the city, further pursuant to chapter two ten of the city code, accepting the donation by Pittsburgh Land Bank of such legal services to be performed by G R B Law on behalf of the city.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill two thousand sixteen.
Bill twenty sixteen, in ordinance, amendment and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance is at title one, administrative article eleven, human resources, chapter one ninety-eight, campaign finance regulations, so as to permit the use of funds held by a candidate committee for childcare expenses.
Uh, motion for a very brief discussion. The councilmen wish to 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 move this today. Yeah, I'm very happy to support and I'm I'm thankful for other members that have decided to support as well, so sure, motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to um ask to be added as a sponsor to the bill. This is an important bill. Uh, speaking as someone that has three young children and um you know, fortunately have the resources to to uh get childcare, mostly fell on my wife. Um, which uh I uh thank uh tremendously for all of her um, you know, time that is rightly hers and we should be sharing together um watching our kids while I was campaigning. But um, you know, for for those that find themselves in a situation where they would need to access um their campaigns, campaign funds in this way, I'm supportive and I like to be as a sponsor as well. Thanks.
Noted.
Noted. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Just briefly, I I really appreciate um Councilman O'Connor and his office working on this bill. And it, long before I ever imagined running myself and I was um helping other people and for office, there were many times where this was an explicit discussion at the beginning of a campaign, whether even even for a candidate making the decision to run. Like, how are we going to um help the candidate uh campaign and who's gonna be taking care of the candidate's kids, both female candidates and male candidates? You know, in a in a two-curved couple, there's, you're not always lucky to have um a wife around or a mom around or a grandparents around. And it was a real explicit discussion of, well, you know, how do we round up volunteers for childcare? If you can afford to pay for it. Um, and it's evenings, it's weekends. Um, and certainly I also spent some time trying to encourage uh women to run for office when I was running a political action committee to fund female candidates. And it was, it's a real barrier. And it was an explicit discussion while I was encouraging women to run for certain seats in the region. Um, the idea that they wouldn't be able to um cover childcare costs is an absolute obstacle. Um, and so I I think this is um really enthusiastic about this and really am grateful to Councilman O'Connor to uh working out the details. Um, and I'm honored to be a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am very enthusiastic about this. Um, I'm happy to be a co-sponsor. I really appreciate Councilman O'Connor, who's a new parent himself and um and his staff for his, for their work on this bill and echo what Councilman um Wilson and Councilwoman Gross already stated. And just to point out that this is also a bill about equity. It's a bill about getting people who have different life experiences into council or into elected office in general, which is, I think, important. We don't want people who have a monolithic kind of life experience um representing us as as elected representatives. We want people who um are poor to be able to run for office and represent um their constituents. We want people who are parents. We want people who have all sorts of different uh life experiences and backgrounds. And uh childcare during a campaign should not be a barrier to that. Um, I also just wanted to state that, you know, so much of this is really just signaling that if you are raising a family, if you are a parent, it's okay to run for office. I mean, there wasn't anything explicitly stopping people from using this as a campaign expenditure um for childcare in the past, but this explicit now makes it explicit and and really signals that it's okay to 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 be a parent, to be raising a family, to be balancing many different things, as Councilwoman Gross said, and to to run for office. So I'm happy to support.
Thank you, Councilman Kalkil.
Yes, uh I would also like to be added to the bill if 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 it be, if it's okay. And um also, I wanna say, you know, in campaign finance laws, they're so big. You know, I often say, if I decide to buy a speedboat with my campaign finance money and take it up and down the rivers and wave to people, well, that's helping me get elected, you know. So, you know, it's it's really, um, you know, there, and and there really is no authority to I'll take you for a ride, all right? There really is no authority to, you know, mandate what what we can and cannot do. But I would say this is something people would hesitate to do and think it was wrong. And to clarify, it was a good thing. And I wanna thank Councilman O'Connor to um, you know, put it out there so people don't hesitate. Thanks.
Will do. Any further discussion?
Very briefly, Councilwoman Gross, uh if you recall, you were kind enough to meet with me back in like two thousand and four, when I was contemplating running for a public office. And you were running uh or you were um cheering, for lack of a better word, run baby run, uh which was assisting then. What was that? What would that be, two thousand four, twenty-one, seventeen years ago? Working to put female candidates, women candidates forward to to run for public office. And you and I met at a coffee shop in uh in Bloomfield and uh
Exactly. I was also trying to recruit candidates and and we had those explicit discussions. Thank you. I'm glad you remembered.
Oh, I do very, very well, yeah, very well, uh very well. But I just, yeah, that just came to mind when you mentioned that. I just wanted to say that. Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, bill is recommended. We now need a motion to approve our invoices.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the intra-departmental transfers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. In your post, transfers are approved. Now need a motion to approve the P cards. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. In your post, P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. Uh, first new papers, bill two thousand one.
Bill two thousand, two thousand one, resolution amending resolution number five twelve, previously amending resolution number two forty-six, four ninety-three, and resolution number one thirty-three, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a fourth amended professional services agreement with Johnson Controls for continued security camera integration and support services at an additional cost four hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and extending such agreements for one year and increasing the overall agreement compensation to six million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill two thousand fifteen.
Bill twenty fifteen, resolution directing the Bureau of Police to to take immediate steps to improve its data collection and the publication thereof in such a manner that meets specific deaggregation criteria, making it any necessary and appropriate changes to its internal operating procedures to comply with the content of this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Kalkil. One supplemental paper, bill twenty forty-five.
Bill twenty forty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and directors of the Department of Public Works and of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a li- a lease agreement with Steamfitters Local Union four forty-nine to allow the city to lease certain real property for use as the Bureau of Police facilities for a term of sixty-four months and a cost not to exceed three million, one hundred forty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents, excluding utilities.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
So I'll start an alternative to you, Councilwoman, because it's your district, so.
It's my district?
Yes. Even though I dispute that. No, I would like to say, um, you know, originally, this building, Steamfitters Local four forty-nine, they built a brand-new facility out in Harmerville. Um, this facility is on Woodruff Street or Route fifty-one there. Um, I originally had taken uh Dan Gilman and a few others just to look at the place for the new Public Works facility, if you recall, which I thought it was ideal for that.
Almost killed him.
Yeah, I know you did. So, you know, but the garage space, the classrooms, this is just perfect for SWAT. Uh, I'm really glad the administration, um, you know, saw this opportunity and is taking it. And the location is ideal. Um, so it's a good deal all the way around. I know we're far from, you know, building the new complex out on Washington Boulevard, but until then, you know, this will tide us over and be a great operating space for SWAT and our police. So happy to see it went by.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanna thank you also for um your work in this and for um realizing it is my district. But I do wanna say that um I think that this not only freed up this building for the Steamfitters and um will help that area. Someone mentioned the other day, um, well, the Steamfitters now support local businesses and do things. Well, so will the police that are in that building. And Allegheny County Labor Council is in the building next to it. So those people all support the local businesses. This, if we didn't do this, we might be sitting and looking at another vacant building in our district. But the best part of this whole thing was it freed up the Stevens School Building and will now have our first ever recrea- city-run recreation center in District Two um at Stevens School in Elliot, in the Elliot community. So it helped. And and with our Madam Clerk, I wanna thank her and um our um facilities people and Director Hornstein for going out and um Lieutenant Ripple uh for going out to look at these facilities. I'll be honest with you, it was like a nine-hundred-degree day. And we went out to lunch together. We we talked about what we wanna see. And then I said, you could go do the tours. I'm going home because it was so hot. But they went out and they looked at the facilities too and made sure that we can put our archives in the Stevens School Building. We're gonna be able to give a home to maybe organizations like Sister Mary's, um, like um Salt Save a Life Today is her organization. Um, like Hope for Tomorrow, our uh West End Boxing Academy at Langley will now be able to move into the Stevens Building if we work through all the agreements and work through everything we have to. But the best part is that our kids will have a city-run facility over there. But um, so I'm happy that the Steamfitters are gonna have use for their building. I'm thrilled with that. I'm thrilled that we're working through any concerns. Um, and I'm thankful that our, we'll have additional police in that area. But I'm really thrilled that our kids are gonna have something that um that is operated by the city of Pittsburgh that's freeing up that building. So I wanna thank everybody. Every, there was a lot of people involved, so I wanna thank everyone for what they, for their for what they, for their contributions to making sure this happens. I want to especially thank the mayor's office, Dan Gilman, and this council for voting for it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our deferred papers, bill seventeen forty-four.
Bill seventeen forty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Garden for the city facility known as the Garden Center for a period of ten years and annual rental fee of one dollar per year with the possibility of renewal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Council, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Yes, we're still, we're still working out the lease negotiations in this, on this building. So I would like to make a request that we, uh, motion to hold for two weeks.
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, it will be held two weeks. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, first new paper is bill two thousand five.
Bill two thousand five, resolution providing for an agreement and contracts with Bromberg and Associates for the purposes of providing effective communication services to people with disabilities for the payment of the cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill two thousand six.
Bill two thousand six, resolution amending resolution number two sixteen, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the master planning process of Fowler Park to add language to allow the city to accept the grant award and spend the funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all their, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill two thousand seven.
Bill two thousand seven, resolution further amending resolution number eight forty, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty CDBG Program, the Twenty Twenty through Twenty Twenty Five Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific projects in City Council District Six and authorize a subsequent agreement for the operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. First new papers, bill two thousand two.
Bill two thousand two, resolution amending resolution number five forty-eight, which amended resolution number eight oh one of twenty seventeen, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with AMCOM for the lease of the multi-function devices and the managed print services for a sum not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year for five years by increasing the not to exceed amount to two million, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill two thousand three.
Bill two thousand three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Innovation and Performance to enter into a one-year agreement with Vision Point Systems to obtain Twilio Flex Support Services to meet the needs of the city at a sum not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill two thousand four.
Bill two thousand four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Google for their Assured Workload Program to securely store sensitive data in Google Cloud Platform according to federal data standards to be in compliance with the U.S. Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems.
Motion to.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, uh, one deferred paper, bill fifteen nineteen.
Bill fifteen nineteen, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for proposed land development located at forty-five fifty-four through forty-five sixty-four Penn Avenue at the, at various parcel numbers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill nineteen ninety-four.
Bill nineteen ninety-four, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for proposed land development located at twenty-four hundred East Carson Street at the parcel number twelve L and South Twenty Fourth Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill nineteen ninety-five.
Bill nineteen ninety-five, resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for six sixty-five Ridge Avenue, a light-of-life ministries project which will involve the development of a lot with proposed renovations and vertical addition to their existing building. The site address is six sixty-five Ridge Avenue in the Twenty Second Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, and that does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. With sessions starting at one-thirty and two-thirty this afternoon, council will hold a briefing on stormwater and stormwater fees. On Thursday, October twenty-first at five P.M., the Board Reapportionment Advisory Committee will hold their first meeting in council's large conference room. Will also make it available virtually to those who are unable to attend in person. Also, the Allegheny Democratic Black Caucus has extended an invitation to all council members, staff, and clerk's office to attend the Respect Our Votes Gala this Sunday, October twenty-fourth at eight P.M. Part of the proceeds for this event will be donated in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth and Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, respectively at ten A.M. Speech registration closes at nine A.M. the morning of those meetings. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by the registration deadlines. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight, or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Is there any announcements from members? Councilman Cockhill.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, mention two things. First of all, if you, um, caught the TRIB article this morning written by, um, Ms. Fenton over here. Um, the, the great story about our Sergeant-at-Arms over here, John, where you at, John? Okay. So, you know, in saving Mr. Meisenhelder's life, uh, some months ago. But, um, really, really great stuff. And, and he put it best where he has confidence that anybody on the police force would have done the same thing that he would have. And I believe that as well. So I just wanted to thank him. Uh, he's been very busy as Sergeant-at-Arms. I don't ever remember a Sergeant-at-Arms having, you know, so much activity as, as of late. But, um, that and I wanted to also, you know, congratulate you, uh, Ms. Pre, um, you know, just taking Pennsylvania by storm, aren't you? It's, it's really good stuff, you know, um, what you're creating and what you're doing. And, you know, besides all the beautiful office space you're creating for us in lounge area, um, you know, doing that for clerks in general throughout the state is really great. So, um, so, so really good stuff. And I just wanted to appreciate, show some appreciation towards both of you. Yes.
Thank you for the note. I had not seen the TRIB articles. I'll make sure to look it up. So thank you, Council President.
I just want to thank the, um, well, Councilman Cockhill for bringing that up. But I also want to acknowledge, uh, that, the clerk, we have an amazing team there. I mentioned it yesterday. We have an amazing team. And also with our Sergeant-at-Arms, he is constantly working really hard. And so I think that, um, we'll have time to celebrate everyone, but I, but I want to thank the TRIB for actually covering something accurately and positively. Um, because we don't always hear, we sometimes see things swayed a lot. And that was a, I was happy to see an actual article that was, you know, with, with, you know, was positive and what was actually happening. So, with that said, I just want to, I want to acknowledge that we have an amazing team here that puts us out here every day, keep us safe and do a lot of stuff. But I also want to thank you, Councilman Cockhill, for your work on the Steamfitter Building because that, well, he was so passionate about, I was like, I'm just going to joke him if he doesn't stop, but he really.
Maybe in the redistricting, we could, uh.
Yeah, I told him redistricting, he's getting it. Because they always think it's their district. I had the same, same battle with Councilman, um, Mosnick at the time. I said, you know, that is actually, that's District Two.
I'll have you know, I'm very careful not to cross your borders.
Oh, yeah. Well, because my family lives in your borders.
Exactly.
And I will say that, uh, I, I'm thankful for the work you did do.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to also acknowledge, um, what we heard about a little bit of public comment, which is the death of Mr. Rogers, um, by, um, while in police custody, um, uh, last week. Um, and there was a vigil in, um, Bloomfield to, um, support the neighbors and his family. Um, and I just wanted to point out that Mr. Rogers was, um, tased by police officers. I think it was Wednesday night. And this was probably one of the kinds of police calls that would have greatly benefited from having a social worker on site. Um, Mr. Rogers was unhoused. Um, eyewitnesses, who, the neighbors on the street, on Harriet Street, were very disturbed by how the, uh, he was handled, um, and that he was repeatedly tased, uh, while going, while the police were taking him into custody simply for riding a bicycle that was, uh, did have a, a sign on it that it was for sale, but the owner said that she would happily have just given it away. It was just, uh, you know, out on her, her yard with a sign on it. Um, and so it's one of those tragic circumstances where one has to question whether there needed to be any police involvement um, in this situation at all. It, it, it seems to have been, uh, the call seems to have been precipitated by basically a misunderstanding. So there was a nine-one-one call that there was a, a theft of a bicycle. Mr. Rogers had already put the bicycle right back where he borrowed it from. Um, and, but he's dead today, um, uh, because of that interaction. So, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that we do have a lot of, of work to do. Um, and we talked a great deal last year about doing diversion, doing, um, uh, you know, staffing up and creating this capacity um, to have social workers, uh, respond to calls, and we're, we're not there yet. And so I, I, I think it's maybe also time to not only hear from the violence prevention side of, uh, the work as we discussed today, but also that Office of Community Health and Safety that is, uh, working towards adding this capacity that is obviously, um, needed. So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that because it's, it's been very, um, distressing, um, discussion in the community, um, in the last week. Um, and then on a positive note, I want to thank our firefighters for handling a very, um, extreme fire on Adderway in Lawrenceville that, um, could very well have gotten out of hand. And no, no one was hurt. There was a firefighter who went to the hospital. Um, I want to thank everyone for, for their efforts because it was, it's a very, very densely populated and densely built, very old part of our city. Um, and we're always concerned, um, when we have those, um, intense fires and really, um, densely built, um, environments. So, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? If not, the motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Some move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.